Hey, good evening. It is seven o'clock. I'll call to order the April third, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Fort Atkinson City Council. Clerk Ebert, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Becker?
Here.
Councilman Jacob?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Lesko here.
Here. Item three, public hearings. There are none this evening. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. Name, address, subject matter and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. And note for those following along on the hybrid meeting this evening, if anyone on the Zoom wishes to speak during the public comment period, please raise your virtual hand through Zoom. The chat box is not monitored during the meeting, and those on the call, please remain muted if you are not recognized to speak. We have no one who has signed up in person to address the council this evening. Is there anyone online who would like to offer comments during public comment?
John House.
Whoop. We do have one.
John House.
John House, please state your name and address for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
John House, one oh four Jefferson Street, Fort Atkinson. I'm pretty excited about this no mo may that the council is working on. I actually thought it was a bunch of hooey at first. But I did a little research. I called Nick Thrill, the president of the Wisconsin Honey Producer Association. And I got an email here, and I'll just basically say what he says. Is the dandelions are actually the first natural nectar food source for the bees coming out of their hives in the spring. But his only caution is probably the council or the city should put a warning in there that any chemicals applied to kill those dandelions. The bees take it back to the nest, and that sometimes will kill the hive. So that's just something I personally would like to see. And I have a friend of mine that has bees, and he put me on an email, not an email, a YouTuber. And they've lost eighty percent of the bees this year again. There's a gentleman that stores the bees down in Texas, and the hives are dying like crazy. So, next point is if we want to get really good about this, why don't we take some of our vacant land that the city owns, like the Clement Park or the new subdivision you're trying to put in on the west side of town? Let's get rid of some of those pragmities and stuff, and let's plant some bee bomb and and nice flowers that the bees can really utilize. I have the mix. I've got three acres of my own land into the bee habitat, and it is fantastic. Takes about two to three years to go, but they really love it. So that's all I have. I support the, you know, the no mo thing, but I'd sure like to see more flowers and stuff planted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on Zoom who wishes to offer some remarks during public comment? Hearing done, the public comment period is over. Item five, consent agenda. The consent agenda outlined below is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second. Motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Hearing done. Motion is to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five F. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Petitions, requests and communications. Item six A, review and possible action on a proclamation recognizing telecommunications week, April thirteenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Captain Lindsay?
Thank you to the city council for recognizing our dispatch centers. We go into telecommunications week next week. We are incredibly fortunate to have a twenty-four seven dispatch center here for our residents. Dispatching, as I'm sure most of you know, is no easy career. It's incredibly difficult. It's nights, weekends and holidays, and we are very lucky to have the staff that we have. So without further ado, the proclamation recognizing national public safety telecommunications week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Fort Atkinson dispatch. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. Whereas, public safety telecommunications of the city of Fort Atkinson have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, the city of Fort Atkinson do hereby recognize the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, to be the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Fort Atkinson in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Proclaim this third day of April, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you for leading us through that. Should we take, should we take a vote?
Take action, then we'll present it.
Yeah, at this time, if anybody would like to offer a motion?
I will move to approve the proclamation and declare the week of April thirteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as telecommunications week in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Is there any discussion? Other than a collective thanks? Hearing done. Motion is to approve the proclamation and declare the week of April thirteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as telecommunications week in the city of Fort Atkinson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. We will take a moment to take a quick photo with our police personnel who are here. We have Avery Dietz and Sandy Hotman. And if anyone else would like to join us, Officer Lindsay? Okay, item six B, a review and possible action on a proclamation recognizing National Library Week, April sixth through the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the city of Fort Atkinson. Manager Hausmann?
Yes, so National Library Week is April sixth through the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it's an annual celebration highlighting the valuable role libraries and library workers play in transforming the lives of the people in their communities. And as we learned from Director Lippert at our, during her annual report at our meeting on the twentieth of February, the library provides so much more than than just books. This proclamation gives us an opportunity to recognize our incredible library and its staff. And it's a pretty interesting history in the city on an annual basis. So are you?
I would be happy to read this one. It's a little lengthy, but there's a lot of really interesting facts and history in here. So you may learn a few things or two. I did by reading through this one. It reads, whereas National Library Week is an annual celebration highlighting the valuable role libraries and library workers play in transforming lives and strengthening strengthening our communities. And whereas, the city of Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin, is home to the Dwight Foster Public Library. And whereas, on October twelfth, eighteen eighty-three, fourteen women met in the vestry of the Methodist Church in Fort Atkinson, organized a local chapter of the Women's Christian Temperance Union and held monthly meetings endeavoring to do their part to improve the quality of life in the city of Fort Atkinson. And whereas, in eighteen ninety, twenty-one ladies pledged to raise one hundred dollars to help fund a new library. And whereas, on December seventh, eighteen ninety-one, Mrs. W. H. Rogers, president of the Women's Christian Temperance Union, acted as chairman and appointed a committee to petition the city council to ask the voters to appropriate five hundred dollars for a free public library. And whereas, on January fourth, nineteen ninety-two, the city council voted to authorize an expenditure of five hundred dollars for library purposes. But later, the city council discovered they could not release the funds because there was no money left in the city treasury. The city council then said that local citizens would have to raise five hundred dollars to match the amount voted by the electorate, and a committee of men was appointed to do so, but nothing was done. And whereas, the women went to work themselves. By May twenty-first, eighteen ninety-two, they had raised eighty dollars by putting on cost suppers, twenty dollars by donations and four hundred dollars by pledges they collected. They then deposited the funds in the Citizens State Bank payable to the Businessmen's Association because they had promised to sponsor the library project. And whereas, the Businessmen's Association and the city council met as a joint library committee on May twenty-fifth, eighteen ninety-two, the city agreed to donate the money for equipment and maintenance. Also, that year, the committee secured a loan of books from the Congregational and Methodist Sunday Schools. Many German books were purchased or donated since many residents could read German but not English. And whereas, the first Fort Atkinson library was located at one fifteen South Main Street, at the northeast corner of Main Street and East Milwaukee on the second floor of the Wigdale Building, now J and M Carpets. On October sixth, eighteen ninety-two, Miss Sue Nichols was hired as librarian for one hundred dollars a year, and ten dollars was appropriated for Miss Cornelia Pettit to assist in getting the library started and catalogued. And whereas, on May eighteen ninety-three, the city council appointed a nine-member library board and maintained a budget of three hundred and fifty dollars. And whereas, in nineteen ten, the library moved to the Frank W. Hord lot at East Milwaukee and Merchants Avenue. And whereas, in nineteen twelve, Henry E. Southwell of Chicago, son-in-law of Dwight Foster, who in eighteen thirty-six became the city's first settler, offered to give the city ten thousand dollars for the purchase of a new library building, with the only stipulation being it be of good design and named in honor of Dwight Foster. And whereas, the new library was dedicated October thirteenth, nineteen sixteen, at a total cost of sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-three cents. And whereas, the library continues to be an accessible and inclusive place that fosters a sense of connection and builds community. And whereas, libraries connect people and technology, providing access to internet, computers and training that is critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. And whereas, libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content programs and classes in addition to books. And whereas, today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas, libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas, libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender identity or socioeconomic status. Now, therefore, I, Dave Inlesko-Harris, city council president of the city of Fort Atkinson, do hereby proclaim April sixth through twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Library Week in the city of Fort Atkinson, and encourage all residents to spend time at the Dwight Foster Public Library either in person or online. Good history lesson.
I will just note that the library's two thousand and twenty-five budget is one million, nineteen thousand and seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
At this time.
Come a long ways in a hundred and twenty-five years.
At this time, if there is a motion.
I move to approve the proclamation.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing National Library Week, April sixth through twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the proclamation. Any discussion? Hearing done. Motion is to approve the proclamation recognizing National Library Week, April sixth through twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the city of Fort Atkinson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. We have an opportunity to take another photo. We have Harley Heim, Manetta Lippert, and I'm sorry. I know the face, but I forget the name. And Tim Wilson with us.
Very good.
Okay, item six C, review and possible action on a proclamation recognizing April as fair housing month in the city of Fort Atkinson. Manager Hausmann?
Thank you. The month of April is celebrated as National Fair Housing Month. This year, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, is celebrating the fifty-seventh anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, which was signed into law by President Lyndon Johnson in nineteen sixty-eight. The attached proclamation declares the city's support for fair housing initiatives and recognizes the benefits of a diverse and inclusive community. The proclamation further declares April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Fort Atkinson. The proclamation is not expected to have a financial impact on the city, but it does help our eligibility for some of our CBPG funds through Waukesha County. So staff does recommend that the city council president sign the proclamation and declare the month of April, two thousand and twenty-five as Fair Housing Month.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the proclamation. I think we'll spare the reading of that one since we don't have a representative of the housing community here.
Sounds good.
All right. We do have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that?
Just happy we're recognizing this again. I think housing is a critical issue, and you know, I think, you know, some of the things in here, they're from languages from the nineteen sixties. And I will look though on social media, and I often see people, there are scammers out there taking advantage of people that are desperate to find housing in our community. I think that's just something to be aware of. So I'm really happy that we're recognizing this again because it is still a need here in two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, without any other discussion, motion is to approve the proclamation regarding April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Fort Atkinson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Resolutions and ordinances. Item seven A, review and possible action related to a tax incremental district tid termination resolution terminating tid number eight in the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Manager Hausmann?
Thank you. The city council created tid number eight in September of two thousand and nine as a mixed-use tid. The tid supported millions of dollars of additional value and growth on the city's northwest side. It was very successful, and it was amended in two thousand and eleven to become a donor tid for tid six, the Clement Business Park, which at the time was distressed. The city council held a tid workshop on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, to discuss a plan for closing the city's three oldest tids, six, seven and eight. And during that workshop, the city council staff and the city's financial advisors from Baird discussed an opportunity to extend the lives of all three of those tids to improve city's housing stock through an affordable housing fund. So the council at that, the meeting on August twentieth, did adopt that resolution extending the life of tid eight for that purpose for one year. We have now collected most of the increment in two thousand and twenty-five for that affordable housing fund. We have not developed those programs yet. That is forthcoming in two thousand and twenty-five. We will probably likely have another workshop on that later this year. Note that there's no deadlines associated with that, with the use of those funds. So the, in accordance with the schedule that's included with this report, as well as was discussed at the meeting on August twentieth, it's now time to take official action to close tid number eight. Recall that tid number nine was an overlay of tid eight for the underdeveloped and undeveloped property in tid eight. So we already have an overlay tid for that, those parcels that still have yet to be developed in that area of the city. That tid nine, as you know, is supporting the development of the Ridgeview Estates subdivision on the northwest side of the city. So there is a, you've got a table in your memo that outlines the impact on property value. All of, when the tid closes, all of the value that is, all of the value beyond the base for tid eight goes back on to the tax roll. So you can see from that table on the memo, in the memo, the projected tax revenue total for two thousand and twenty-six would be three hundred, or the total is one million, one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-three cents. That's split between the four taxing jurisdictions by the, by the mill rate percentage, which is calculated annually. This table uses the two thousand and twenty-four mill rate to show the estimated amount that will go back on to the city's tax rolls. So in two thousand and twenty-six, we should have about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of additional revenue without increasing any, the mill rate or any taxes whatsoever. Note that the city is responsible for commissioning and submitting a final audit for tid eight to the DOR. We have requested that engagement proposal from our auditors. They've provided that, and we've engaged them on the audit. So the city council and the public will see a final audit of tid eight, provided that it is closed tonight through a resolution in August of two thousand and twenty-five. And staff does recommend that the city council adopt this resolution terminating tid eight in the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and directs the city clerk to file the appropriate paperwork with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue by April fifteenth. I'm happy to answer any questions about this or the tid plan in general.
I just want to say, I think this is another example of the successful use of TIF by the city and just the fact that over fifty-seven million in increment was generated since the creation of that tid a few years ago. I think that's really, speaks to how this tool was utilized to economically benefit Fort Atkinson. It's really good to see that.
Yeah, termination often has a negative connotation, but in this case, it's a very positive, has very positive meaning and good news for the taxing jurisdictions as well.
I would move to approve the resolution terminating tid number eight in the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and direct the clerk to file the appropriate paperwork with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue by April fifteenth.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the resolution terminating the tid number eight. Any further discussion? Hearing done. The motion is to approve the resolution terminating tid number eight in the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, and direct the clerk to file the appropriate paperwork with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue by April fifteenth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item seven B, review and possible action relating to a zoning map amendment ordinance, changing the zoning of the property located at three thirty-three Lincoln Street, parcel number two two six zero five one four zero four one two two zero seven from urban mixed-use UMU to single-family residential SR seven, building and zoning administrator Drager.
Hello, thank you. As I said, this is a third reading. We've heard this before for the city council, both on January twenty-first and February fourth, where it was moved along to the third reading. It was also held a public hearing at the Bank Commission on January, excuse me, on January fourteenth, where it was recommended through by the city council. This came along with a certified survey map approval as well. It's been a little bit of time since that second reading, but it was held up to allow time for that certified survey map to be recorded, so that there is now a legal parcel of land for a zoning map amendment to, in fact, take place. To recap, this was an existing parcel that had a vacant section of land to the south of it, along Lincoln Street. The owner proposed to separate that portion of land to create an infill lot that's single-family residential to allow for additional development, which would, has the potential for generating additional revenue for the city. The lot dimensions and everything meet the ordinances, except for there's one existing setback on the original lot. But that does not change with this proposal or the zoning map amendment, as that was part of the CSM approval. But city staff does recommend a, forming the third reading and approval of the zoning map amendment, and I would welcome any questions.
Don't have any questions, but we've seen this all before. So I would move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of the property located at three thirty-three Lincoln Avenue from UMU, urban mixed-use, to SR seven, single-family residential seven.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Just again, happy to see another opportunity to create some infill housing developments. Nice to see.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done. The motion is to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of the property located at three thirty-three Lincoln Avenue from UMU, urban mixed-use, to SR seven, single-family residential seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Reports of officers, boards and committees. Item eight A, city managers' report. Manager Hausmann?
Thank you. Jed Drager and I presented to the Fort Atkinson School District Board of Education on March twentieth relating to the progress at Ridgeview Estates. The district continues to be a valuable partner in this development, including supporting multiple traffic and logistical changes throughout the project. The city and the developer closed on the sale of lot one this week, which will be the site of the eighty-seven unit apartment building, and the developer has early start permits to begin to dig the foundations. So we should see work out there very soon. Work on the Public Works and Parks operations facility continues. Staff is fully operational out of the new building, and the former office and garage building is being demolished. The West Shed building will be updated next, and then the final site work will begin. City Clerk Michelle Ebert and her team of incredible staff and election officials administered another free, fair and transparent spring election on April first. Thank you to Michelle, Courtney and our Parks and Recreation staff and all of the other staff, election officials and voters for making this the highest turnout April election since April of two thousand and sixteen. Four thousand, four, four hundred and fifty-seven people voted for a fifty-nine percent turnout for a spring election. That is excellent. And congratulations to Kyle Jacob and Dave Inlesko-Harris on reelection for another two-year term on the city council, and Peggy Huckabee on her election to the city council. Terms will begin on April fifteenth, and we look forward to working with you all. Also, on April fifteenth, the city will begin the first of four city council orientation sessions to acclimate new city council members and provide a refresher for interested current city council members. Topics covered in the first session include form of government, open meetings and public records, land use and planning, economic development and boards, commissions and committees. The curbside brush collection started this week and will continue through November. Please call the Public Works Department to schedule a pickup, which will take place on the first Tuesday of the month for the north side residents and the second Tuesday of the month for the south side residents. Visit our website for more information on size and material requirements. I know people will be pleased that the compost site opens this Saturday, April fifth. Our website has more information on hours and availability as well. April seventh through the eleventh is severe weather awareness month in Wisconsin. The city will be participating in the statewide tornado drill at one forty-five and six forty-five PM on Thursday, April tenth. There's more information on our website on that as well. The Hord Historical Museum recently closed part one of the sixty-third annual Mary Hord Art Show. Part one is open to all students who live or attend classes in Fort Atkinson. And this year, one thousand, sixty-nine students from public, private and home schools submitted artwork for display. Part two opens April twenty-third and features high school and adult artists. And the museum is fairly certain that this show is the longest-running community art show in Wisconsin, aside from Madison. On Saturday, April twenty-six, Chief Peterson and the Fire Department will hold a public officials day at the Fire Department. This will be an exclusive hands-on experience for elected and appointed officials in the city and our township partners to learn about fire, EMS and special rescue operations. If interested, please RSVP to Chief Peterson by April nineteenth. Uh, if interested, please R S V P to Chief Peterson by April nineteenth. Uh, Boost Fort Atkinson Business Competition is nearing completion. All video pitches have been completed and the, uh, by the contestants, and the community voting for a favorite has begun. Links to download an app or watch the videos and cast your vote through a webpage are available through the city's website and the Chamber of Commerce's website. Judges will review proposals on April seventh and declare a winner on April fourteenth. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce and the city are working with the Wisconsin Rural Partners to host the twenty twenty-five Wisconsin Rural Partners Summit at the Riverstone on April thirtieth and May first. We have many local business owners on panels, uh, to share success stories with attendees. Uh, and Sarah Weir and I will be providing a city bus tour on April thirtieth, which will end at Patty Shack. So we look forward to sharing our community successes with other municipal leaders in Wisconsin at that, uh, at that event. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Item nine, unfinished business, there is none this evening. New business, item ten A, review and possible action relating to twenty twenty-four year-end financial information, manager houseman.
Thank you. Give me just a minute here. Okay, so, um, tonight we have the city's twenty twenty-four year-end financial report. So we'll start with the goals here. So the goals of this report that we do annually are to maintain transparency and accountability for public funds, provide a financial overview summarizing revenues, expenditures and financial health, evaluate pro, performance against the planned goals of the twenty twenty-four approved budget, uh, and plan for future budget, uh, processes based on past performance, as well as communicate the successes and initiatives, uh, that benefit the public. So some of our twenty twenty-four accomplishments, uh, include completing that general obligation borrowing. Uh, and note that, uh, we were able to reduce that borrowing by, um, by three million dollars, and the impact of that was, uh, saving over six point nine million dollars to the taxpayers over the next twenty years. Uh, we also broke ground on the Public Works and Parks Operations Facility, implemented a shared G I S position. The council and the public will hear more about, uh, the progress we've made, uh, in the G I S sphere at the next meeting. We'll have that, um, employee, uh, make a presentation, uh, on April fifteenth. Uh, we also designed and began the Ridgeview Estates Public Infrastructure Project, uh, approved a development agreement with Intrepid Investments for Ridgeview Estates. We began our Janesville Avenue and downtown, uh, Main Street corridor planning, uh, launched the Boost Fort Atkinson Business Competition. We approved a capital catalyst revolving loan to Little Rainbow's Play Place, and approved an offer to purchase and an option to purchase for three lots in the Clement, uh, Business Park. Uh, in addition to that, we completed our, our water main work on Cloud Street, Safki, Caswell and Nelson. We completed sanitary sewer work on Maple Grove and Park, allowing the city to create six lots for future single or two-flat development. Uh, that plat has now been recorded and those lots will be on the market, uh, within, uh, likely the next month or so. We applied for and received multiple grants from the Department of Transportation that will allow several projects to continue over the next several years, including a path on South Main Street, the relocation of Banker Road and Infill Sidewalk. Uh, we expanded our fire EMS service into the town of Oakland to help a neighbor in need. We approved the, uh, creation of that Affordable Housing Fund to support additional residential development in the city. And we worked with community members on, uh, a new concession building at Homerson's Pond and a new World War Two Memorial Monument. Uh, staffing-wise, we hired eight new people, promoted seven people from within to fill positions, uh, and celebrated six retirements, which, um, included a hundred and sixty-nine total years of, uh, experience with, or I should say, service to the city. So it's just a little bit of a, little bragging, um, on all we did last year. So the, these are what we're going to outline, uh, in this, um, year-end financial information here. We're going to talk about taxes collected. Um, we'll highlight, uh, general fund accounts fifteen percent over or under budget, with those accounts having five thousand dollars or more in them. Uh, estimate that, um, increase the general fund fund balance, and, uh, all the fund balances of all of our different funds, and then carryover requests to twenty twenty-five, not twenty-four, as it says, uh, on the PowerPoint. Uh, and I just want to note that, um, those numbers won't be official until the, um, twenty twenty-four audit is complete, and that will likely be in May of twenty twenty-five. So, um, we do this number, we show this number every year just as, uh, an indication of, of, uh, how much, um, property taxes come through, uh, the, um, Michelle's office, uh, the city clerk treasurer's office. Um, we levied not just the city, but the school district, the technical college district, the county, uh, the city, as well as for tax increment districts, levied twenty-seven million, five hundred and, uh, seventy-six plus, um, thousand or million, twenty-seven point five million dollars, uh, for twenty twenty-five operations. Of that, uh, as of one thirty-one twenty-five, we've, uh, collected nineteen point seven million of that, which is seventy-two percent of the total. Uh, second installments of property taxes are due to the county by the end of July, and we'll have all of our final settlements in August of twenty twenty-five. So we'll go into the general fund revenue accounts. Um, these are accounts that are fifteen percent over or under budget, with those accounts having five thousand dollars or more. Uh, you'll see that we have four accounts with fifteen percent or more, uh, that were fifteen percent or more under budget, so unrealized revenue, and eleven accounts that are fifteen percent or more over budget, creating surplus revenue, and for a total estimated revenue above our budget of two point three million dollars. So you can see I say, wait, what, what? That's a, that's a lot. Uh, that's not, um, that's not common, uh, and as is included in, um, the, the memo, uh, there are a couple of reasons for that, and we'll go through a couple of those too. So, uh, first of all, I just want to point out, we did budget, uh, for the twenty twenty-four budget. We did budget a little bit of fund balance, uh, to apply to that budget, to balance the budget. We did not need to use that. So you can see it's in the budget column, but not in the actual column. So that shows up as unrealized revenue, but that's really a good thing, because we didn't need to use it. Uh, the next one of note is the proceeds from borrowing. So this is the reimbursement of a land purchase for the Public Works and Parks Facility. Uh, if you recall, back in twenty twenty-three, we loaned ourselves five hundred thousand dollars to buy that, um, to buy the property, knowing that when we did the borrowing in twenty twenty-four, we would repay the general fund, fund balance. So that's five hundred thousand dollars, uh, that, um, is going back into fund balance. The next one is five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That is the de-federalized ARPA funds. So that will be transferred to an assigned A N, assigned, not unassigned, assigned, uh, fund balance account, uh, for previous, for, um, use as previously planned, and the council adopted a resolution to that extent, uh, in December of twenty twenty-four. The big story is interest income for twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four. So, uh, in July of twenty twenty-three, when we started putting the twenty twenty-four budget together, we didn't know that interest rates would increase so much. Uh, we knew that we would be borrowing in twenty twenty-four, but we didn't, uh, realize how much we could take advantage of that borrowing, and, and, uh, we did due to the interest rates. So we did that borrowing, but the funds were not used immediately, which means they got to sit in a bank account, and, and we actually renegotiated rates, uh, on those funds with our local bank. Uh, and they were very accommodating to keep that money for us at an, um, increased, uh, interest rate. Uh, we also have done investing. The, the council has approved, uh, some CDs with, uh, P M A and W I S K. And those, uh, those alone, uh, we have about two point five million dollars invested, uh, with, uh, P M A and W I S K, and that produced, uh, one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars of interest income in twenty twenty-three. So, one million four hundred, uh, excuse me, one million forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars of interest income. Uh, and as you can see, we budgeted ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, uh, interest income. So, um, I'm happy to answer questions at the end or during if we have them. Uh, but the, the true story of, of the fund balance increase will be due to our, um, interest income. Taking a look at our expenditure counts that are fifteen percent over or under budget, and again, those accounts with five thousand dollars or more in them. There were, uh, fifteen accounts with fifteen, uh, fifteen accounts that were over budget, uh, thirty-nine accounts that were under budget, with a total, um, estimated expenditures under budget of about three hundred and eight thousand dollars. So you have a, um, a table in the packet, uh, and in the, the memo that outlines all of those, uh, accounts, but I will just, uh, mention a couple. Uh, over-budget accounts, uh, included the forestry and compost accounts, and those were work and expenses that occurred in twenty twenty-four from the twenty twenty-three storm. So we did get, uh, reimbursed for, for those, uh, in twenty twenty-four. But we don't credit expenditure accounts. Uh, I T hours, uh, we did, um, those were over budget, but we stopped allocating those to other departments, and that will be fixed in the twenty twenty-five budget. We will budget appropriately for that. Uh, fire overtime was, um, over budget, um, and that is due to the fact that our minimum staffing is also our maximum staffing. So we do have to pay O T, uh, overtime for all absences, um, when, um, when we're understaffed. So that includes sick leave, it includes F M L A, it includes vacation, uh, it includes any sort of, any sort of absence. Uh, we do have to call back and pay overtime for that. So that will, uh, likely continue until we have, uh, more people in the department. And then we had some police and fire vehicle expenses for repair. Um, as one was associated with an accident. So, and we did get insurance, uh, funds back for that as well. So those were, um, uh, highlights of the funds, funds that were, or the counts, excuse me, that were over budget. Uh, and those that were under budget significantly included our health and dental insurance, and that does change. We, we, um, budget, uh, for the folks we have in place at the time of the budget, right? And then staffing changes, people switch health insurance to single family, they, they, um, leave and don't have health insurance. So, um, so that was, that was, um, under budget. And then we have some salary and wage, um, uh, unspent, uh, for unfilled positions. And then some of our utility accounts were, um, uh, were underspent. So nothing of great concern on that. So when we look at our estimated net increase to the general fund fund balance, um, that, uh, twenty twenty-four net revenue, um, increase is one point, uh, six million, not the two point three million that was on the other screen, and that is because we did transfer those ARPA funds and the truck, the fire truck funds to assigned fund balance accounts. So those two items are in accounts that are, um, assigned for those purposes and will be used for those purposes in the future with council approval. So that, um, removes six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from that. So our, our estimated, uh, net increase to fund balance is just under two million dollars, uh, subject to final, um, subject to change with the final twenty twenty-four audit. So it was a good year. Um, just looking at all of our, uh, our other fund balances, um, there's a, a list here. Obviously, it's challenging to see the full list is on, is in the, um, in the memo, in the packet. Uh, there is nothing of great concern, but I will just list all, these are all of the estimated fund balances that have positive balances at the end of the year. There were positive contributions to, uh, all of these, uh, fund balances. Um, so they're, they're in good, uh, all these funds are in good shape, uh, for the coming year. There were a couple that have negative, uh, year-end fund balances. Those are included on this page. We have our EMS fund that is, um, mainly due to timing of payments for services. Our tid nine, uh, is, has a negative fund balance right now, but that was a new tid created in twenty twenty-three. So we have all those creation costs, and we do charge staff time to that, um, that tid, but we haven't had any projects yet. So that will pay itself back very quickly, uh, over the next couple of years, as, as soon as we, uh, have a project in that tax increment district. Our C D B G Loroman Fund, we're still working towards, uh, site closure from the D N R, so that fund is still negative. There is light at the end of the tunnel with that fund, uh, because eventually we will have land that we can sell to make up, uh, for that negative fund balance. Uh, and as I have mentioned, none of these, uh, funds present a major, a major concern. The last table we have is our carryover request to twenty twenty-five. Uh, they're listed here, again, it's a little too small to see on the screen, um, but the, uh, they include the Main Street and Janesville Avenue corridor planning. We are continuing that project that should be wrapped up within the next couple of months. Uh, we have a fire department project that, uh, is a donation for class A uniforms. We received that donation in twenty twenty-four, but we haven't paid the bills yet. So we're asking to carry that over to twenty twenty-five so that we can pay those bills. Uh, we have some unspent funds, um, for the fire department for equipment in twenty-four that are being carried over to twenty-five. And then, uh, youth center, senior center, dance, memorial, park, Homerson's Pond Shelter and Projects, Diamond Dirk Youth Triathlon. Um, a bunch of these are just annual carryovers due to timings of programs, right? So the senior center, um, we have a lot of, uh, folks who go to the senior center who pay for a trip in November, and the trip doesn't happen until February. So those are those kinds of funds. As you can see, uh, if you can see, or if in the packet you can see better, they're not substantial dollar amounts. Uh, the recreation office, uh, had a minor remodel in the twenty twenty-four C I P. We're waiting on that until this year, twenty-five, to achieve some economies of scale with the small remodel in the city manager's office. And then I will just note that the street cleaning, um, fund, the banker road, uh, funds, and the, um, senior center van funds that were carried over to twenty twenty-four have been spent in twenty-four, so they will not be carried over into twenty twenty-five. Okay, so that is the carryover request, and that is the, um, let's see here, the of all of the numerous things that I've talked about, uh, today, the, the one action item that we are requesting is that the city council approve the twenty twenty-four funds requested to be carried over to twenty twenty-five as listed in that table five, for a total of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. Uh, the remaining information is just, uh, for your information, but I am happy to answer questions. I will just note that twenty twenty-four, again, was a really great year for the city financially. We were able to take advantage of those interest rates, uh, right place, right time, with the right amount of money. Uh, as you all know, interest rates have fallen since then, so, uh, we really were in a good position, uh, at the right time there. Um, and we did budget more in interest income in twenty twenty-five, uh, but not significantly more. I think we should probably still hit those, uh, those projections with the investments that we are continuing to make. So I'm happy to answer questions, um, from the council.
Well, I, it's not a question, maybe more a comment, is that it is a really good story to tell from twenty twenty-four, including the financial picture. More surplus revenues than unrealized revenues. A little more than two times as many, um, underspent than overspent accounts. And some of those overspent accounts are ones that may traditionally be overspent ones, because there are things that you can't accurately forecast, and a lot of good, smart financial decisions made by staff in terms of how we have, uh, administered the ARPA funds, and then just the changes that you and your staff have made, uh, that allowed for a really good year of interest income.
Can't really add much to that, but, uh, yeah, again, a credit to, to you and your staff. It's just really tremendous to see. Um, I will, I will move that we approve the twenty twenty-four funds requested be carried over to twenty twenty-five as listed in table five for a total of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second. We have a motion to second to, uh, approve the carryover of the funds. Any further discussion?
I just want to add, it is very fun to do the month-end financials and to go through all these numbers and to watch everything grow and to monitor some of the expense accounts that are not depleting very fast. So it, it's, it's, it's been fun doing this, this year.
Good year. Okay, without any other discussion, the motion is to approve the twenty twenty-four funds requested to be carried over to twenty twenty-five as listed in table five for a total of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item ten B, review and possible action relating to the crack fill, seal and re-stripe of the parking lot and baseball court at Rock River Park and basketball court at Ralph Park. Parks and Recreation Director Dayton with us this evening.
Uh, good evening. So the first item I have here, uh, is, um, like I said, the crack fill, and then also the repainting of the basketball court out at, uh, Rock River Park. This was included in the twenty twenty-five capital improvement budget, uh, which was approved back in November. Um, and, and this is important to continue to, uh, prolong the life of our, our, um, our resources that we have. We did reach out to three different, uh, vendors. Uh, two of them just didn't have the capabilities to complete the work, the full project. Um, and so the one that did was under budget, um, which also prompted us to look at other options to, uh, see if we could, um, tack on another item to this. tack on another item to this, to this fund as well. So with that, the, the overall cost for both the crack fill and the painting of the Rock River Park project came out to 2,000, or sorry, 20,150. And to use up the remaining funds, staff would like to request that we also include the 1,250 dollars that would cost to repaint the Ralph Park basketball court as well. The total project for this would be two, two, sorry, 21,400. And to, to come up with the extra 400 needed to complete the project, we would use money from the park supply account. With that said, staff does recommend that the city approve the quote from Midwest Seal Coat as proposed, or as the project is described in the funding, sorry, through the funding in the staff report. I will take any questions.
When would the basketball court otherwise have been planned for?
So it is on a five-year plan to have that court in particular is the, it, it has the same paint that we have on like our tennis courts. And so it's not as simple as repainting just lines. There's, there's more to it because it has multiple color shades to it. So it, it is on a five-year plan and it is also included in the comprehensive plan, the city's comprehensive plan as well as a, something to maintain regularly.
Was it planned for this year?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any questions or?
It's always good if you only get one bit, it's a little bit under your budget, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it's nice that you're able to stretch those dollars a little bit more and get some extra work done.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Midwest Seal Coat LLC's proposal for the project as described and funded in the staff report.
Second.
A motion a second to approve the proposal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, motions to approve Midwest Seal Coat LLC's proposal for the project as described and funded in the staff report in an amount of 21,400 dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item 10C, review and possible action relating to the purchase and installation of a new circulation pump strainer at Fort Atkinson Aquatic Center.
All right. It's always nice to start talking about pools because that means summer is just around the corner. So this project was also a part of the 2025 capital improvement budget as well. This is the first portion of this, this item, or sorry, this, this budget because we also have the, the bathhouse project that is getting finalized right now. But in the mechanical room, we did find that through our staff maintenance inspections that the circulation pump strainer was something that moved up in priority and that was, needed to be changed. It is no longer manufactured. It was already 15 years old. And so with that, updating it would also put us in an easier state to be in compliance with state requirements, which require that we have two strainers or two baskets available at all times. We got a quote from Carrico Aquatics who have been working with us for many years on the pool and with that would come the work on the actual, the installation of the strainer. And then also this product comes with a five-year warranty on the unit itself. And then their work also comes with a one-year warranty if anything were to happen to it. Included in the, the strainer is an additional basket, again, as required by law. And thankfully, we would be able to find another one or purchase another one because this is currently being manufactured. So with that, the overall budget for this, for the pool CIP is 32,000. But for this one particular item, we are requesting 7,725, which does also include the 325 dollars for shipping. So staff does recommend that the city council authorize staff to accept the proposal from Aquatic, Carrico Aquatics for the purchase and installation of the circulation pump strainer at a cost not to exceed 7,725. I can take any questions.
I assume this is just to strain out any foreign objects or something coming in the water system or?
Yeah, so this would be like the, the first line of defense on these, on the intake portion of the pump. And this would take out a lot of the larger particles, the larger debris. And then we have other strainers or filters that would actually take out the, the smaller bits.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll move to authorize staff to accept the proposal from Carrico Aquatic Resources for the purchase and installation of a circulation pump. At a cost not to exceed 7,725 dollars.
Second. A motion a second to authorize accepting the proposal.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Don't have any concerns with the shower stuff coming in over budgeting?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. We have some flexibility to navigate that and, and take care of higher priority items and, and see if we can wrap other ones into potential other, yeah, other funding sources.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then. The motion is to authorize staff to accept the proposal from Carrico Aquatics Resources for the purchase and installation of a circulation pump strainer at a cost not to exceed 7,725 dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item 10D, review and possible action relating to the purchase of a large diameter fire hose for the Fort Atkinson Fire Department. Chief Peterson.
Good evening. I'm here to request authorization to purchase large diameter hose to replace the agent equipment on engine 8163. The Fort Atkinson Fire Department follows a structured hose replacement schedule to ensure the reliability of our equipment. The five-inch hose on 8163 has been in service for 12 years and that exceeds the NFPA 1962 recommended replacement schedule of 10 years. Large diameter hose is the large yellow hose you see laying on the ground that supplies water from a fire hundred to the engine that we can boost pressure. We also use it to supply water between engines. So it's a critical part of our, of our operations. The department would be purchasing 10, 100-foot lengths, 3, 25-foot lengths, and 1, 50-foot length. And those come with a five-inch torch connection, which gives us compatibility now with our fleet, but with our neighboring towns so we can hook up to each other's equipment. And this configuration on this engine conforms to NFPA 1901 standards for fire apparatus. The purchase, it was included in the 2025 capital improvement budget for 17,000 and the total cost for this is 16,168.50, which is 831 dollars under budget. Purchases made from McQueen Equipment in Delfield, which is our preferred vendor and the sole supplier of this snap-tight hoses, which is important to remain compatibility with all of our equipment. The old hoses will be offered to other city departments first, and then we offer them to departments in need throughout the state if they need anything. After that, we would dispose of the hose. Therefore, staff recommends city council approval to purchase large diameter hose from McQueen for a cost not to exceed 16,168.50.
Any questions?
I move to approve the purchase of large diameter fire hose for the city of Fort Atkinson Fire Department from McQueen at a cost not to exceed 16,168.50.
Second.
A motion a second to approve the purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, motions to approve the purchase of a large diameter fire hose for the Fort Atkinson Fire Department from McQueen at a cost not to exceed 16,168.50. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Item 10E, review and possible action relating to the 2024 Department of Natural Resources Annual Recycling Report. Manager Helsman.
Thank you. So the city is required to submit an annual report to the DNR on the city's recycling activities for the year. That report is in the packet tonight for your review. The city recycled 920.12 tons of materials in 2024 compared to 896 tons in 2023. The, that is 147.62 pounds per capita, which surpasses the standard required by the DNR. So the city has met that collection standard. When we report these, this information to the DNR, we do get some funds in return through a recycling grant that is projected to be 35,201.74. So that our net eligible recycling costs for 2024 were 500, or excuse me, 253,250. So we do recommend that the city council approve the annual report and authorize staff to sign on behalf of the city. Be happy to answer any questions.
It's a lot of tonnage.
I'll move to approve the 2024 Department of Natural Resources Annual Recycling Report.
Second. A motion a second to approve the report. Any discussion? Hearing none, motions to approve the 2024 Department of Natural Resources Annual Recycling Report. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item 11, miscellaneous. There are no items sent to this one tonight. Claims appropriations and contract payments. Item 12A, review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorization of payment.
I move to approve the verified claims as presented.
Second.
A motion a second to approve the claims. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the verified claims as presented. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Jacob?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President, let's go here.
Aye. Motion is approved, five to nothing. Item 13, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.